If we could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here. The first item on our agenda is to establish a quorum of our board team. We do have a quorum. Ms. Flynn's running a little late, but she should be here in about five to 10 minutes. So that covers item one. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Reverend Charlie Baskin from St. Luke Methodist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you, sir, for being here. Will you please pray with me? Oh, Lord God, when you created humans, you gave them an intellectual capacity that you gave no other creature. And you called us to use that capacity to care for creation and for each other. As a part of that calling, we are to learn from each other and to teach each other, as well as to pass on our collective wisdom from one generation to the next. So we give you thanks for those who have dedicated themselves to that noble calling. We ask for your guidance and blessing, as they devote themselves to serving others in this way. We thank you for those who support them in positions of leadership, administration, and service. Inspire and encourage them in their vital role of equipping and enabling those who have been gifted to teach. And for these men and women who serve as leaders for this school district, we give you special thanks this evening. As they set themselves to the task before them, we seek your blessing of wisdom, vision, compassion, of patience, and of humility. Protect them from influences which might distract them. Grant each of them a sensitive heart, a clear mind, a willing spirit, and an active courage for truth. Cover them with your protection and peace as they remain true to their purpose. We seek these blessings in the name of the One whom who came to bless all the peoples of the earth. Amen. Thank you, Reverend Baskin. We appreciate that very much. Okay, our next item is our pledges. We have four outstanding young students from Bradford Elementary School, and they're going to come forward as I introduce them. We have Julian Gaspar and Michaela Gaspar, Michael Lozano and Leandra Ortiz. So if y'all will stand, we'll do our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good job. Okay, I told them that if anybody wanted to take a picture, I'd have them turn around, and then they could... Parents or anybody that wishes to take a picture can do so. Feel free to come on up. It's okay. Okay. Oh, no. Great job. Thank y'all so much. We're about to move into our... When we have meetings in the summer, and we miss our students being here, we always have them for our pledges, so we really miss the opportunity to have them in June, July, and August. But thanks again for those folks being here. Our next item is recognition. This evening, in order for our Lakeview High School athletes to make it to their athletic banquet, we're recognizing them early. So I'm going to turn it over to Brent McCully, and we're going to recognize a number of our student athletes from Lakeview High School.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lehman, the Board of Trustees. We appreciate the opportunity to come tonight, and as you will see, we've had a lot of great things going on here at SA ISD and the Athletic Department, and we've got lots of folks here tonight, and so we'll do our best to run through. But first, on the agenda, because of a sports banquet that's scheduled tonight, we're going to introduce some of our teams at Lakeview. They've had a great spring, a lot of success in a lot of areas, and we're very proud of what they've done. But we want to get this thing started. First on the list is the boys' basketball team and Courtney Blitsky.
This... Yes, yes. You got it, Vern. Follow the leader. This season's team, of course, we were very senior-laden, and they really stepped up as far as senior leadership as they should, and that was a big part of our success. Their commitment, their buying in to what we were doing offensively and defensively was, of course, attributed to their maturity, their ability to work together, as they've been a squad for... Most of them for all four years of high school. So starting from left to right, we've got Senior Vernon Hart, Senior Jonathan Dominguez, Senior Timothy Agüero, Senior Cameron Melendez, Junior... Broke the rhythm. Isaiah English, Sophomore Ahmad Daniels, Sophomore Dylan Hart, Freshman Johnny Espinoza, and Senior Michael Jordan. And my assistant, varsity first assistant Stratton Frye, huge, huge in the thing that we got done this year and what they accomplished. Oh, got one more senior coming in. Fresh off the plane from Ohio, Jordan Dozier. So as I said, we had 10 seniors on this team, and we're expecting the foundation that they set to be the... What will build our future success upon for the, you know, duration of my tenure and hopefully Stratton's as well. So there you have it. Thank you for having us.
Coach Blitsky? First playoff team since when?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen-year drought. Congratulations, Coach. The coaching box was as fun to watch as the team, I promise you. But anyway, next up on the agenda, come on up, Coach Menor, girls' soccer.
All right, well, thank you, School Board, for recognizing our achievements. We're very proud of these girls. It was a great season for our Lakeview Maids soccer team. We had nine wins overall. We got third place in district, and then we returned to the bi-district playoffs for the third time in a row. So these girls have accomplished a lot. We've also placed seven members on the all-district team. So those that joined us here tonight are Ariana Rangel, Veronica Prieto, Mallory Goveya, Gabby Torres, Robin Flores, Abby Borrego, Eli Vela, Jordan Brooks, Darian Bankston, Hannah Hinaos, Faith Moore, Desiree Perez, Jessica Rangel, and Jill Estrada. Thank you again.
Thanks, Coach. Appreciate you.
Coach Gonzalez, come on up.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. It gives me much pleasure to let you know that these young men had a great, great season with the help this year with our assistant coach Nathan Hopkins. These men did a lot for our school and for our community. We have 13 seniors that are leaving us this year, and it was a great season. Went 4-4 non-district, went 4-6 on district, got fourth place, and were able to go first round playoff. And I'd just like to let you know that these men not only did a lot on the field, but they learned so much. Great team, and I know the 13 that are leaving will be going on further in life. I did want to introduce you to our seniors first. We've got Guzy Guzman, excuse me, Kristen Guzman, we call him Guzy, Diego Salas, John Miller, Francisco Muniz, we've got Andrew Winton. We've got a little nickname for him, but we'll just say Andrew. We have Giovanni Gonzalez, we've got Timothy Agüero, we've got Brian Salas, we've got Carlos Lira, we've got Omar Ramos, we've got Johann Franco, we've got Daniel Ramos, Luke Smatana, Isaiah Chavez, Luis Pérez, we've got Jesse Guzman, we have Juan Luis Espinoza. And out of these soccer players, we have five that were recognized in our district. For Newcomer of the Year, we had Daniel Ramos. For First Team, we had Carlos Lira. For Second Team, we had Brian Salas. And for Honorable Mention, we had Johann Franco and Omar Ramos. Thank you very much.
up.
Okay, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity today to recognize these girls. And I'd like to thank you all for your continued support for the Maids Track Team. These five girls, we're actually missing one, but these five girls were the five that qualified past district. We have a relay team, we have a pole vaulter and a shot putter. The relay team, the four-by-one, actually ran one of its fastest times since 2000, we believe, at the area meet, which was pretty, pretty good. I'm just going to name y'all. When I say your name, go ahead and step forward. Jordan Brooks, she's a senior. She was area qualifier in the four-by-one. Caitlin House, she's also a senior, area qualifier in the four-by-one. Denisee Light, sophomore, area qualifier in the four-by-one. Veronica Diaz, junior, she was an area qualifier in the pole vault as well as the four-by-one, and a regional qualifier in the pole vault, finishing in fourth place, and she jumped a PR of 12 feet, 11 feet, sorry. And then last but certainly not least is Maya Lindsay. She is our senior. She was area qualifier in disc and shot, regional and state qualifier in shot, and she also came home with a little bit of hardware from the state meet and got third place in state. These girls worked really hard and deserve all the recognition that they get, so thank you all so much.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for having us here. I know everybody's probably going to say the same thing, but really, we really appreciate just the support that y'all give us. It's, you know, everything that we do is always for these kids, and it's great to have parents that are involved and board members that are behind us all the way. So I'm just going to name off our kids that we have up. These are our area and regional qualifiers this year. We have Jordan Avedono, who's a senior, area qualifier in the 300-meter hurdles. He's the first guy on the other side there. Tomas Breones, junior, area qualifier in the one mile and the two mile. Jordan Fowler, senior, area qualifier in 200-meter and four-by-two, area and regional qualifier in the four-by-100. John Miller is senior, area and regional qualifier in the sprint relay. Frankie Muniz, he's a senior, area qualifier in the four-by-two and pole vault, area and regional qualifier in the pole vault and sprint relay. Elliot Peterson, he's a sophomore, he's an area qualifier in the four-by-two, area and regional qualifier in the sprint relay. Fernando Renteria, senior, area qualifier in the disc. We have two more that we're not... They're not here with us tonight, but like Coach Kintner has talked about, I mean, these kids started practice in January. It really never ends. They're constantly going. I think pole vaulters were a little sooner than January, so we went through about 16 weeks of practice, and it's a long, grueling season, especially if you're a distance runner. So really appreciate these guys. I appreciate y'all's support, and this is your Lakeview Track Team.
You know, what you see with a lot of these kids as they walk through, a lot of these kids were here in the fall, too, and they're a lot of multi-sport kids. And in fact, I've seen two or three of the young ladies who are three-sport athletes, which I think is a tremendous thing for them and their commitment to these programs. Up next, we'll have the men's and women's powerlifting team, and Coach Lyons, come on up.
We'll talk about the ladies first. As a team, I've got nine of them. Two of them couldn't make it this morning. But I first want to thank you guys for allowing us to come and show off our kids today, and thank you for the opportunity to get to coach them. And thank you guys, the parents, for carting them up to school and coming and following them and supporting them, and we thank you for letting us coach your kids. And so as a team, the maidens went to Irian County and got third place as a team. We also went to El Dorado and pulled the second-place team. We qualified nine girls to regionals. I have two freshmen that aren't here today, Michaela Sloan and Soraya Rodriguez. I also have Kalen Hayes, a freshman. She got fifth place at the regional meet, one of the only freshmen to score a point at the regional meet. I have Riley Smith. She scored eighth place at the regional meet. And then I have Lauren Lambert tied for fifth place or fourth place? Fifth place at the regional meet. I also have Lizette Hernandez, a junior, qualified for the state meet and earned seventh place at the regional meet. We have Marissa Cervantes, another junior, sixth place at the regional meet, also qualified for the state meet. And then we have Lizette Paez, a senior, got second in the regional meet and earned herself a spot at the state meet to go compete. And then we have Caitlin House, a senior, regional champion, in seventh place at the state meet. I also... To kind of piggyback on that, Caitlin also broke every single record at the regional meet. She now holds the record for the bench press, the squat, the deadlift, and total pounds So only two seniors in that group, and the rest are underclassmen, and so I look forward to some good things next year. Ladies, y'all go ahead. I'm glad Coach McCully said something about seeing kiddos two or three times, and I'm very thankful for these powerlifters, both the girls and the guys. I don't necessarily have a period, an athletic period, where we get to lift, so a lot of kids come before school at 6:30, a lot of kids stay after school, sometimes even after their own individual practices. So a lot of these kids are dual-sport athletes and things like that, so I do appreciate them very much. The Chiefs went to Irian County and earned second place as a team. We also went to El Dorado, earned third place, and then we took second place at our home meet this past February as well. Took 10 guys to the regional meet. Miguel Arroyo is a sophomore. He earned second place only because he tied with first place. And in the rules in powerlifting, believe it or not, the lighter guy beat him. So he's one of our big guys here at the bottom right here. Miguel, I tell them, if he just cuts a little bit of that hair off, he'll be the lighter guy. I'm just saying. Cody Combs is a junior. He is the regional champion. Both of these guys went for their second time to the state meet this year. Bubba James Christiansen earned fifth place at the regional meet. He's a junior. Frank Muniz, you've already seen him come through for soccer today and for track, and now this is his third time. You saw him last, in the fall, for football. Frank earned fifth at the regional track meet. Shawn Rodriguez is a junior. He also earned fifth place at the regional powerlifting meet. Have I been saying track meet? I have been saying track meet. Powerlifting, I know what I coach, I promise. Michael Jordan earned fourth place at the regional powerlifting meet. You also saw him with basketball. Javaria Smith earned fifth place at the regional meet. Michael Gloria earned fifth place at the regional powerlifting meet. Chris Chapa and Christian Baca also went and competed at the regional powerlifting meet and represented us very well. So this is your 2017 Chief Powerlifting Team.
Let me read our script for this evening, then we'll move forward with our agenda. It says, "Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular School Board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students and our district. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed in an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape may adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask that you remind my fellow board team members to please turn off or silence your cellphones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, to thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district." Okay, we're also going to do some board member recognition, and Dr. Detloff's going to lead that for us.
It is my sincere privilege to recognize one of our elected officials and school leaders for many years. Tim Archer was first elected to the Board of Trustees in May 2001. Since that time, he has led the board through transformation, change, and built a legacy of excellence in service. A staunch supporter of board governance, policy creation, and fiscal transparency, Tim has helped SA ISD conduct all operations from a solid financial foundation. His keen auditing eye and leadership of our Finance and Audit Committee workshop has helped our district to new levels of financial stability. Mr. Archer's leadership has helped the board evolve into a school board that is recognized across the state for their dedication, unification, and positive impact on student achievement. It's well-known in educational research that school boards set the bar for academic excellence in a school district. They also set the conditions for learning through policy, advocacy, and approving the financial decisions that drive student success. Tim knows this well, and through his leadership, dedication, and persistence, coupled with the wisdom of our entire board team, has created a thriving school district. Tim's 16 years of servant leadership has been a blessing for this community and this school district. I will deeply miss his wise counsel, his ability to generate new solutions, and his caring heart for people. The community of San Angelo and our school district are in a better place because of you, Tim Archer. Thank you, Tim. You're a learning hero. There are so many supporters and previous leaders in our district that are here to recognize you tonight, Tim. If you will come up, please, and accept this award, and it's also a symbol of our appreciation for your years of service. Now unofficially, we were calculating a few things in the lunchroom earlier, and apparently, Tim has met with our school board over 550 times. Now, I didn't calculate the hours of service, but that is unbelievable. Over 16 years, has met 550 times, and as you know, as an elected official on our school board, his compensation has stayed the same for 16 years. And that is nil. So, Tim, you're a true servant leader, and we greatly appreciate you. Let's see what we can find. First, Mr. Archer, I'd like to provide you this, this crystal, in appreciation for your dedication and contributions to the children of the United States. dedication and contributions to the children of San Angelo through your service on the SA ISD school board, 2001 to 2017. And I am not an urban forester, but apparently the wood on this handmade box, one-of-a-kind, is the local, and we believe it could be marbled maple and mesquite, but you'll have to double-check me on that. So, we have this wonderful token of appreciation. On the front, it says, it's engraved, "Tim Archer, San Angelo ISD School Board, 2001 to 2017." A one-of-a-kind box, and in it, you can put all of your prized possessions and those sticky notes with all your hours and notes. And, Mr. Archer, I know the board will want to provide input as well, because they've worked with you for many, many years. So, again, Tim, thank you, and Mr. Lehman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. I get to lead off the comments from our board team based on the position I have. But, Tim and I have known each other since we were four years old, and it's been a real honor and a privilege to serve with him. I tell people all the time that talk to me in the community, you know, what's it like to serve on an elected board? And even though we started out in pretty rough times, Tim was always there. He's always been one that's insisted on accountability, that we make sure that everybody in the district knows as much about our finances as possible, and he's very diligent about watching after the taxpayers' money. So even though he loves kids dearly and cares immensely about the progress of our students in this district, he also cares about the taxpayer and how we spend our dollars. And that's a unique person, someone that has the talent and gifts to manage the fiscal part of our district in addition to loving and caring for our kids. So, Tim, thanks for being a great example for me personally and for our friendship that's lasted, even though we've known each other since we were four. Sometimes when you're thrown into a position like this, your friendships don't last, and Tim and I have made sure that that's lasted through our board service, and I'll know that I'll depend on him in the future to continue to be a part of the things that are going on, the good things that are going on in our district. So, thanks, Tim. Appreciate you.
I'll go next, and that buzz is just because I'm buzzing about Tim anyway, but I've had the privilege, I met Tim when we were going to college out here, and that's been decades ago, quite some time, and he and I have both been in business here in the San Angelo area since that time. And back in 2010, when they asked if I would perchance consider serving on the board, Tim kind of took me under his wing and... Tim kind of took me under his wing and stopped the buzzing. All the buzzing around that comes with becoming a new school board member kind of took me under his wing and helped me grasp all the intricacies of school, finance, and especially fiscal transparency, and then everything else to do with the workings of a school district. So, I certainly appreciate that, Tim. Thank you. You've been a great friend for a long time.
I didn't grow up here as a kid, so I didn't know Tim when I was four years old, because I would have, Tim would have been one-year-old or two-year-old if I was four-year-old, because I'm older than Tim. But I have enjoyed being on the board with Tim. Tim has been a mentor to me, as he has been for many of the board members that have come on, all of us, I guess, since Tim, and I've watched Tim go from being a watchdog to a real ambassador for our school district. He's worked very, very hard to become a better board member. He's taken his role here very seriously. He's entered many training. He really has learned how to be an exemplar board member, and I agree with everything that Lanny said and everything that Dr. Detloff said. I'll just tell you, Tim, I'm going to miss you, and I'm going to try to do as well as you've done on mentoring the new board members and try to use you as a role model to become a better board member myself.
Well, I haven't known Tim as long as most of the other guys. I've only known him for 12 years. But I know when I came on the board, Tim was always there for advice, and if I had questions, you know, he was always willing to help me, and I learned a lot from him, being my neighbor here on the board. I ask him questions, and he's always willing to answer, and sometimes, you know, he goes above and beyond of what I ask him, but I've really enjoyed the time together and our school board conventions that we go to, he's always there as support. So I'm going to miss you, Tim.
So I've known you for the least amount of time, because I've only been here for four and a half years. But I really just wanted to thank you very much for being such a great mentor to me, and along with the rest of the team, just showing me everything that needs to be done to be an effective school board member. So, thank you very much.
I'm not much for words, Tim. I don't know. I met Tim, I guess, back when he first ran for the board, and that was 2001. I remember seeing him, and I spoke with him, after you'd been elected and I got involved with a lot of stuff, but I was telling Tim a while back that I ran into some of, every time I see some of our old board members that were here before, and we talk about the rough days when it was back and forth, back and forth, and one thing I've always said is that, "Tim, you were one of the ones, one of the main ones that got us where we are at right now, where we are at right now." And I am so proud that we are here, and it was because of you, because of you, because every board member and every other board member that was here before, but you stayed here this whole time, 16 years. You've seen the changes, the transitions, everything, and it's because of you we're here where we're at, and we hope to be going higher because of you. And I appreciate all the wonderful things you told me on how to look at and how to suggest things. So I thank you very much, Tim.
Those are kind words. I appreciate it very much. I am honored to have served this school district. It's been a privilege to work with each of you. I'm going to twist this around just a little bit, because the success of our school district, in fact, is a reflection of our students and our students' achievements. What we have seen tonight and these kids that are coming through here, there's a good example. Saturday at graduation, that's the ultimate of student achievement. That's what I'm most proud of, and I appreciate it very much, because it's time for these kids to get recognized now too. So, thank y'all very much, and I'm glad to have served. Thank you.
Okay, our next item's item five, which is to consider our certificate of election. And, Dr. Bright, it basically says that certificates of election have been prepared and have been provided to the board, so I get to sign these. It says, and these are for each one of our newly-elected board members, some returning board members. It says, "This is to certify that Bill Dindel was duly-elected school board trustee, single-member District 1 pursuant to the order canceling the May 6, 2017 school board election. Said order being issued on March 27, 2017. Bill Dindel shall serve the term of office through May 6 of 2021 or until replaced by a duly-elected successor. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and cause the San Angelo School District seal to be affixed to this the 22nd day of May 2017." And it's dated, obviously, May 22 of 17, and it's signed by President of the Board of Trustees. So, that's Bill's. Mr. Hernandez has a similar statement, although his is a little different, because he did go through the election process. So he was elected on May 6 of 2021. And then we have Dr. Kingman, who's going to be sworn in this evening, and then the other returning member of our board team is Ms. Mizell Flint, so Amy also has similar language. So I'll sign those, so Marta won't be after me later. So my notes say that the president shall sign and date these certificates of election and issue them to the elected candidates. So that's what we're in the process of doing. It's interesting to point out how many left-handers we have on the board. Yeah, it's a quorum of left-handers. And I'll read this. This is what they signed. I'll choose Art, for example. It says, "I heart Art Hernandez. Do solemnly swear affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God. Under penalties of perjury, I declare that I have read the foregoing statement and that the facts stated herein are true." And it says, "Trustee, single-member District 2, Art Hernandez, and today's date." So that's what everyone's signing, or has now signed. So that is our certificate of election and the statement of elected appointment office as an appointed or an elected officer. That covers item five and six. Item seven is to conduct our oath of office, and we're going to let our judge take care of that for us. Everyone who... Yeah, thanks, Marta. Thanks, Judge Daniel, for being here.
Hi, and then state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board President, Trustee, San Angelo Independent School District, of the State of Texas, will to the best of my ability serve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Thanks, Bill. I know. Yeah, sorry. Okay, that, I think, takes care of our oath of office and our election. Now, item eight is to consider selection of officers. We can select officers individually, or we can present a slate. Would anybody like to present a slate of officers for our school district? Yes? Mr. Parker?
I don't know that we've discussed this.
Well, we're not supposed to discuss it.
Well, I know, but as far as a slate, I certainly would nominate you, Lanny, for president. Why I said that is I forgot that Tim has been an officer and been our treasurer since Adam and Eve, so I don't know who on the board might be interested in that. I didn't read your lips.
I think Mr. Dindel would be an excellent choice.
Perfect, perfect. And I would nominate Bill to be the treasurer. Gerard is the secretary. I'd nominate him, and I'm reluctant to nominate myself, but I guess if we're going to do the same slate, then I would nominate myself as vice president.
Okay. All right. So, thanks, Mr. Parker, for stepping up and doing that. Our slate includes the following. For president would be Lanny Lehman, vice president would be Max Parker, secretary would be Gerard Gallegos, and treasurer would be Bill Dindel. So, are there any board comments or questions? So we need a motion? Max is a motion, so we need a second.
I'll second.
So we have a second from Mr. Gallegos and a third from Mr. Hernandez. Do we have any board comment or questions concerning that? Any public comment?
Mr. Dindel, have you memorized the announcement a little?
If not, I'll call our motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. I would remind everybody that all the officers serve at the discretion of the board, so anytime we want to change officers, we can do so. So it's not a, you're not appointed for any period of time, you're just appointed for tonight's meeting, and anything beyond that at any point in time, if we want to change officers, then we're allowed to do so. And it's an honor and a privilege to serve with those who are members of our board team. So that covers our selection of officers. I appreciate that. We're going to do some staff recognitions, and then we have a number of our student athletes that we're going to recognize from Central. So, Dr. Bright, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and congratulations, and welcome back to all of you, and welcome, Dr. Kingman. Tonight is my honor to recognize one of our own. Tonight, we're going to recognize our coordinator of financial services, and it is Kathy Jordan. Part of her responsibilities includes administering our wellness program in the district. And we have a pretty unique and robust program that partners the district with Shannon Health and Edwards Risk Management. And in the short time she's been here, she has really just taken off with the program. She handles the ever-popular mammogram parties, she coordinates the marathon challenge, which finishes with the kids' final lap at San Angelo Stadium, which just took place not too long ago, and she just completed her first spring wellness campaign called Elevate, Rise Above Stress, where we had over 400 employees participate here recently. And so her efforts have already caught the eyes of several people around... And so her efforts have already caught the eyes of several people around the state. And tonight, she has been recognized as the Edwards Risk Management Spring 2017 Work Well Newcomer of the Year. And so would you please help me congratulate Kathy on this award?
turn it over to you, Jamie.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Lehman, and members of the board, Dr. Detloff. This evening, we are honored to recognize two employees of San Angelo ISD. First, Mrs. Jessica Parker. Mrs. Parker, would you come forward? Mrs. Parker is Assistant Principal at Fannin Elementary School, and she has been honored as this region's Assistant Principal of the Year by TPSA, which is the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. So that is her state professional organization, and she has been selected for this award by her peers, which is quite outstanding. Now, she is one of 20 Assistant Principals across the state, receiving this recognition. And she will be traveling next month to Austin to receive the big award that she will be receiving from TPSA. But this evening, we're so honored to recognize you here. Mrs. Parker is a native of Merton. She holds degrees from Texas Tech and Angelo State University, and she has served with SA ISD for the past 10 years as a teacher, instructional coach, and assistant principal. Her family is here with her tonight. Mr. Parker, would you stand? And there are three beautiful young ladies that are part of this family. There are the children, the young ladies are ages 2, 6, and 8. So, Dr. Detloff, would you come forward and help me in presenting this certificate from SA ISD to Mrs. Parker? And we'll get a picture. And we definitely congratulate you, Mrs. Parker. Applaud all your efforts, and we are so glad you're part of San Angelo ISD. Congratulations. Mr. Lehman, another well-deserved recognition this evening is that in which we will honor Mr. David Phillips. Mr. Phillips, would you come forward? Mr. Phillips is the Orchestra Director at Central High School, and under his direction, the Central High School Varsity Orchestra has just received, well, recently, its 33rd consecutive Sweepstakes Award in UIL competition. The coveted Sweepstakes designation indicates the highest rating from judges in both concert performance and insight reading. Something our audience may not know is that Mr. Phillips' Sweepstakes record is unsurpassed in the state of Texas. The group that comes the closest to matching his record is the Arlington-Martin High School String Orchestra, with 31 consecutive years of Sweepstakes. So Mr. Phillips holds the state record for consecutive Sweepstakes awards. He is a native of San Angelo, a graduate of Central High School and Angelo State University. This is his 37th year to direct the Central Orchestra. He is married to Terry Phillips, who's here this evening. Mrs. Phillips, would you stand? They are the parents of two SA ISD products, Cristiana and Brandy, and they have two grandchildren who are soon going to get more grandparent time. Mr. Phillips, we congratulate you. We thank you for your dedication and leadership. And Dr. Detloff, would you present this plaque with our appreciation to Mr. David Phillips? Congratulations, Mr. Phillips. Thank you, Mr. Lehman, and I believe we are now ready for our Central High School athletes.
We are. Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. So we'll move forward with our recognitions. And again, our Executive Director of Athletics, Brent McCauley, is going to help us with recognizing some Central athletes.
Thank you again for having our athletes here tonight. Central High School has had a tremendous spring. Had a lot of success, district championships, regional championships, playoff teams, a lot of individual regional and state qualifiers. It's been a great year for Central High School, and we want to take time this afternoon or this evening to recognize these individuals for their accomplishments. And first up, we have Coach Haig and the swimming team. Come on up, Coach.
I know you got a lot of people out there. Took me 39 years to go first in this thing, but I'm going to make it quick and get it going. Girls, come on out, stand in front of the group here. Right out in front there. Keep going, keep going. Guys, follow them, keep going. I brought, I just brought six girls and six boys, and I'll give you a real quick how our season went this year. The girls won their seventh district title in a row. They set four school records. We had four girls, excuse me, three girls make Academic All-America, Academic All-State. We had one girl, first-team All-Region, All-State. Four girls, second-team All-Region. 12 girls were named first-team All-District. Three girls were named second-team All-District. 18 girls qualified for regionals. And then I'll go over them individually real quick. Down the end, where's Lacey Bednarz? District Champion 100 Butterfly. Lacey was on three of the school-record relays. Lacey also placed fourth at regionals, on the 200 free relay, fifth in the 400 free relay, and she was a consolation finalist in the 100 Butterfly. DJ Corbin, she was a first-team All-District, district runner-up, regional qualifier, and she was Academic All-America, Academic All-State. And she just signed to attend the United States Coast Guard Academy. I think our first person from Central High going to the Coast Guard Academy, that I know of. Next, we have Maddie Stevens. Maddie's just ninth grader. She was the district runner-up on the 200 free, 100 free, swam on two relays at district, that were district champions, and she was on a 400 school-record relay. Chloe Edinburgh, first-team All-District, honorable mention All-Region. Chloe, district champion 100 backstroke, regional finalist. She was also on the 200 medley relay and set a school record. Sophie Forbes. I miss anybody besides Sophie? Oh, Lindsay Hildebrand. Lindsay Hildebrand is one of our seniors, first-team All-District, first-team All-Region. She was the district runner-up in the 50 and 100 freestyle, regional finalist, fourth place in the 50 free. She was on two of these school-record relays. She's in Academic All-America, Academic All-State, and she'll attend the University of Texas in the fall. Sophie Forbes, sophomore, first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, honorable mention All-State, set the 50-yard freestyle school record, was also on three of the relay school records. She also was a state qualifier, and now she holds a record, like I said, in four different events. And we're going to have her back for two more years, so she's done a great job. Let's have a big hand for the girls. Not to be outdone, the boys had, they were the district champion for the seventh year in a row. We had four boys named to the All-America Swim Team in the 200 free relay. Matt Brewer, Ryan Brown, Riley Hill, and Nate Piero. We had four school records set. Academically, we had four boys, senior boys, make Academic All-America, Academic All-State, and two juniors. Also, we had four boys named first-team All-State and All-America. Six boys named first-team All-Region. Nine boys, first-team All-District. 16 boys qualified for regionals. Individually, we had, well, let me just start with Matt Brewer. Matt Brewer, we're going to be missing him. He's a senior. Matt Brewer was first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, first-team All-State, All-America in the 50-yard freestyle, All-American on the 200 free relay. Again, district champion, regional champion, third place at state in the 50 free. He was the district regional champion, sixth place state meet, and the 100 free. 200 free relay, again, we were eighth, and he swam in the fourth leg in a great split of 20.2. He, again, holds the records of the school records in four events. He has district, set three district records this year. He is signed, is going to go to TCU next year and swim for them. Academic All-America, Academic All-State. He's done a great job for us. We're going to miss him next year. Next, I got Ryan Brown. He's a junior, going to be a senior next year. Again, All-America, 200 free relay, district runner-up, 100 free. He was on two, three of the school-record relays, and he'll be back next year. Also, we have Alex Tucci. He's a junior, be a senior next year. 100 back, district champion. He was a regional, third at regionals in the 100 backs, had a school record in the 100 back. He was on the 200 medley relay and the 400 free relay that set school records. So we look forward to him coming back next year. Nate Piero, he's All-American in the 200 free relay, first-team All-District, All-Region, district third place, regional consolation finalist, Academic All-America, Academic All-State. He'll attend Texas Tech University in the fall. Wyatt Waters, he was on our medley relay, had district champs, regional champs, and state qualifiers. He swam in the breaststroke leg, 27.8. He was fourth place at the regional meet, I mean, at the district meet in the 100 breast and consolation finalist, Academic All-State. Rob Yale's not here, but he was Academic All-America, Academic All-State, number four in a senior class, and is attending Duke University in the fall. And anybody else, Riley Hill? Anyone else I missed besides Riley? Riley Hill is just a sophomore. Riley was the district runner-up and regional runner-up in the 50 free, qualified for state in the 50 free. He was also on three relays that set school records. Riley's had a fabulous year. Next year, as a junior, we're hoping he can move up and qualify for state individually in a couple of events. But very proud of this whole group. Last year, we had about 14 new teams come to our region, and I was very worried about how that was going to go, and this whole group stepped up. We set tons of school records, really surprised a lot of people, and I think San Angelo has made a good name for itself in our region and the state. And this is my wife, Coach Val, my assistant coach. So she helps us out a lot on the side. I don't know if she's bumping me to say that. She said, "Shut it down." Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
[laughter] You did good, Coach.
Congratulations. That's a great one. You already do it.
Okay, next up, we have the women's soccer team at Central High School, and Coach Henry.
Well, thanks for having us. I appreciate it. This season in 2017, these girls were, they had 16 wins, two losses, and four ties. Had a fantastic year. They were District 868 Champions. That's back-to-back district championships in two different districts. They had their 10th straight appearance in the playoffs. They're by-district champions and lost to a very good flyer Mount Marcus team to kind of boot us out. I'm still kind of upset about that one, but we'll be okay. I'm going to start with my seniors. Haley Castle, who was an outside striker. Go ahead and give a wave, Haley. Wave. Yeah, there you go. Co-captain for me this year, Academic All-State honors, and won the Hollins Award this year for the program. Brittany Snyder, my only, I only have two seniors this year. She was a defender for me, and she received honorable mention honors this year in district. My juniors, now officially seniors at this point. Kelsey Bunch, who was an outside striker for me. She received honorable mention honors. Branna Cottle, my attacking center mid. She's a co-captain this year, and also first-team All-District honors. Tegan Wilson was an outside striker for me, and she was first-team All-District as well. Alexis Carino, my center striker, who looks a little upset at the world for some reason right now. She was a co-captain and also first-team All-District honors for me. Georgia Ganster, who is a defender for me this season. My sophomores, Megan White, my goalkeeper, second-team All-District honors. Michaela Pope was a defender, first-team All-District honors for her. Anissa Fernandez, who played a center midfield position for me. Madison Maybin, who was a defender for me this season. C.T. Montez, who was second-team All-District this year. Aliyah Marsh, who was first-team All-District for me this year. Y'all lined up very well, by the way. I think we've only been off about a couple towns, which is amazing. Raiden Hicks, who is a goalkeeper for me this year. And then Addison Bonaventure, to wrap up the sophomores. She was the offensive MVP for the district this year. My fishies, my little ones, there's three down here on the end. Avery Handy, she was a striker for me this season. Camille Torres, played a center mid for me this season. And then Leslie Nuno, who received honorable mention honors this year. Very good season. I'm very proud of these girls, and I can't wait for next season and get them all back, or most of them back. Again, that's 2017 Lady Cat Soccer Team. Thank you.
[applause]
I know we worked you hard, so.
Thanks.
I love you.
I love you.
Okay, next up are the, is the men's soccer team at Central High School.[587.04][587.04][applause]
All right, thank y'all for having us, this is my 2017 Central Varsity Soccer Team. We finished the season with 13 wins, seven losses, and two ties. Finished second in district 868 with a 10-2-2 record. I'd also like to introduce my assistant, Kyle Jones. He did a great job with our JV this year, they finished 10-2-2 in district as well, and he's actually gonna be moving across town to head over the boys soccer program at Lakeview, so I wish him the best of luck over there. Start with my players, we have A.J. Alvarez, he's a junior. Have Mason Garza, who's a sophomore. Have Cade Henry, a freshman. Have Dylan Lowman, who's a junior, he was first team all-district. Isaiah Balderas, he was second team all-district this season. Senior Tyler Jackson, he was the district's offensive MVP. We have senior Giselle Martinez. We have senior Walter Thomas, he was first team all-district and also academic all-state. We have sophomore Marquis Cole. Senior Cody Ortega. Junior Aiden Henry, he was first team all-district. Sophomore Kagan Plamel, he was an honorable mention. We have senior Mark Cabrera, he was second team all-district. We have junior Logan Myers, he was first team all-district. Senior Josh De La Cruz, and senior Adrian Hernandez.
Okay, next up will be the women's gymnastics team, and Coach Walker.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate the opportunity to introduce these lovely young ladies to you, it's always an honor and a pleasure. First of all, this is a 2017 girls gymnastics team, and they followed through like the previous teams have before them. First, I'll introduce them by their grade and their name. Senior Malina Garcia, I only have one senior. Two juniors, Skylar McCowen and Kelsey Springer. And then the rest are freshmen with Janaye Cotner, Afton Cummings, Melissa Hartman, Anna James, Mary Grace Thompson, Carly Wallace, and Hannah Williams. And missing tonight is Savannah Razani, who's at a choir concert. So these young ladies, 17th consecutive year, were district champions, and it'll be easier if I go through it this way, if you were a district champion, step forward, please. If you placed in the top six in district, step forward. And all of these young ladies were also elected to the all-district team. Now let me move on to regionals. We were 17 years of consecutive wins for the regional championships. If you were a regional champion on three events, step forward. If you're a regional champion on another event, step forward. There you go, Mary Grace. If you were, if you placed at the regional championship, step forward. There you go, good girls. Thank y'all. And they also made all, the all-region team as well. And then at state championships, in the past 10 years, we have lost three times, and it's been at the state championship. And we placed second this year, and we almost had it, we almost had it. But it was fantastic outing for a group of eight freshmen, one senior, and two juniors. So they really gave it a hard fight there at the end and almost took it home. But they, they went above their ranking and ended up placing second to Rockwall High School. So they did a great, they had a great season this year. We always appreciate your support, and we are looking forward to the future with such a young team. So thank you very much.[899.06][899.06][applause]
Coach, I think I saw some bulletin board material for you from Walk Raw on Twitter.[915.51][915.51][laughter] Okay, now the men's gymnastics team, if you guys would come on up.
Thank y'all very much for having us, we really appreciate it. This is our 2017 team, and, you know, it's hard to follow our girls' team. I'm just glad we had 2015 when we both won, that was an outstanding time. And year after that, we finished 10th, and this past year, we finished 7th at state. We were second at district, second at regionals, and then, of course, 7th at state. We won one meet this year, it was the Harold Green Invite, we finished first there at that meet. I'm gonna start with our sophomores. I have one that's at Driver's Ed, Corey Springfield, he's not here. And then we also have two, Mariano Deller, he finished 26th at state, he was our top finisher at state on floor, and he's also at a choir concert. Then we have Wayne Hines, field, step forward. Did an outstanding job this year, first team all-district, and was our, one of our all-arounders, outstanding job. Then we had Skylar Canyon, he's at a choir concert. Now I'll go to our juniors, Mateo Castillo. Mateo walked in the gym this summer during open gym, had never done gymnastics before, and just started kind of messing around in there. Started out, and I put him in my JV class and worked his way up to varsity. So he, he's an extremely hard worker and very dedicated, doing outstanding job, looking forward to him next year. Next, we have, Mateo was a junior, Sam Franco, Jr. He finished 18th on pommel horse at state and was second team all-district. Did an outstanding job. Next, Colton Kramer, Jr. Colton trains pommel horse and rings, he picked up pommel horse this year, he did strictly rings last year, and he also does a little bit of floor and also high bar. So he's starting to work everything. Great job Kramer, Colton. Next, we have Hendricks Lancaster, he is at work today. Then we have Christian Cannon, he was one of our all-arounders, and he finished 28th on vault at state and 28th in the all-around. So he did an outstanding job. He's also first team all-district. Next, seniors, Brett Sabatka. And Brett did an outstanding job for us this year, competing on floor, high bar, and vault. Next, our other senior, Mason Suddeth. He was also first team all-district, and finished 24th at state championships on rings, and placed eighth on the parallel bars at state, and also 33rd on high bar. He was top finishers on those three events. Also, he met a goal this year, scoring a 10-0 on the parallel bars, and did that, I guess, about three or four times this year. And we just have a policy, you can't go on the record board unless you do it at a championship meet with two judges. So got close, did outstanding job, very proud of him and proud of this team.
Okay, next up will be the women's track team at Central High School, Coach Ventura.
You know, thank you for this opportunity to recognize our track program and these lovely young ladies and their accomplishments this year. I'd like to begin with our freshmen. Juliana Covey was an area qualifier in the 1600 meter relay. Torin Martinez was a district champion, area and regional qualifier in the 300 intermediate hurdles. Kyrie McPhail was an area qualifier in the 1600 meter relay. And Kaylee Seymour was an area qualifier in a pole vault. Our sophomores, Anastasia Candela was an area qualifier in the long jump. Bay Hester was an area qualifier in 1600 meter relay. Aliyah Marsh, who finished fifth at district and ended up being an alternate and got to jump at the area meet, and took advantage of that. She increased almost two feet, jumping 36 feet 4 inches, becoming the area champ and regional qualifier in the triple jump. And McKenna Martinez, unable to be here tonight, was an area and regional qualifier in the high jump. Our juniors, Jasmine Diaz was an area and regional qualifier in the pole vault. Alexis Grafton, area qualifier in the 300 meter hurdles. And Bailey Kenny was a district champion, 800 meter run, area qualifier in the 400 meter dash, 800 meter run, 1600 meter relay, and a regional qualifier in the 800 meter run.
Okay, next up will be the men's track team at Central High School, Coach Holster.
Thank you, Coach McCauley. We've got a lot of guys that, that aren't here for varied reasons. I'm gonna go through those guys first because it's important that they be noted, recognized tonight, thank you. Tristan Lopez, he was on the 4x4, he was our third leg on there. Tyler Milford qualified in the 800 and the 3200 for area. Trevion Prince, a freshman, was also, he was our opener on the 4x4 at area. Brandon Sabatka, he was a pole vaulter, alternate to area. Henry Teeter ended up running the 4x4 at area due to some injuries. Adam West was a high jumper who got in off of an injury. And Justin Yose was a pole vaulter that jumped at area. The guys who are here, Demarcus Cobb, he was an alternate in the, in the 100, first one of those I've had in my career, and that, looking at my hair, that's been quite a while. Matthew Childress, he was a long jumper, triple jumper, who not only qualified for area but also for regionals. Cody Parker, he was a 300 hurdler, 4x4. He was about to run at area until things happened to his knee, obviously injuries. Quite a few injuries this year, but the good thing is they're all young and they're coming back, and especially this young man right here. And then the Yuri Agus brothers, both Alejandro and Antonio, both of those were 4x4 guys that were at area. And then finally, Cameron Cross, he was a area regional and broke a 20-year drought for state athletes in the shot put, throwing 53, 11 and 3/4. A lot of field events guys and girls, if you noticed, and I think you've got to recognize some of those coaches that, along the way, because we paired up and coached both boys and girls this year. Marty Howzer did triple jump, Whitney Young coached long jump, Rusty Buzzard did discus, Richard Ramos coached pole vault, John Downey coached some high jump, as well as myself. And Freddie Davis coached cam in the shot. So those guys did a great job, and so did these young men, obviously representing San Angelo and Central.
Next up, we'll have the high school tennis team at Central High School, and Coach Rutherford. These, I don't believe we come up in the fall, did we? So we'll talk about some team tennis and some spring tennis, okay? Coach Rutherford.
This is a group of young folks here, these are all our underclassmen that represented Central in 2016, 2017. This team had an awesome fall. They finished third in the, in district, and they made it to the regional semifinals. They probably won one of the most exciting matches I've ever been a part of when they defeated El Paso Franklin in El Paso, 10 to 9. It was, it was really a special moment. But they're a young group with a lot of potential. We finished fourth in area. Nine of these, nine of our team, in the spring, we had nine of our 16 qualify for the semifinals at the district tournament. So now from that point, we did not fare as well as we would have liked to, but we, we got some very valuable experience through the process. We're really excited to have this, this young nucleus, and we really think they have a world of potential. Griffin Kent is gonna be our returning, one of our returning seniors. Luke Sawyer will be another of our returning seniors. Luke won, I think, the 10th match in that El Paso Franklin match, if I'm not mistaken. And Griffin and, well, Dylan, Dylan Errett will be a senior next year. Coleman White, Coleman's turning into quite a doubles player. Everett Bailey had an outstanding year. Natalie Fluger has just shown steady progression. And two of our three freshman girls, Ally De Senzo, she's really just a spark plug, she's, she has a great attitude on the court and she's just great. And Addison Hinson, yeah, she's gonna, she's gonna be able to play tennis pretty well. But we're real proud of these guys, and I, and I think they're really gonna do something special in the future, and they have had really a fantastic year.
Okay, next up will be the men's and women's powerlifting teams at Central High School, and Coach Chester.
Coach Long couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to fill in for him. Thank you to Coach Davis, Coach McCauley, all of our administration at all levels, and our, our school board for all that you do for us. Really- school board for all that you do for us. Really fun group of kids to be around. It's kind of interesting that our, our girls are all sophomores and our guys are seniors. There's two guys that are not here and all the guys are graduating and then we've got three girls left, so we've got to go recruit some guys for next year. We had a really good, really good powerlifting season. On the girls' side, we'll go ladies first. Courtney Bowers, she's a sophomore, like I said, she got third place at regionals and was also a state qualifier, which is not easy to do at all. Alarmon Talvo, a sophomore, she was a regional qualifier and almost made it to state. She was leading the regional meet all the way to the last lift and some of those girls can, can deadlift quite a bit. And then Kate Valdez, sophomore, regional qualifier and also almost got to state right there on the last lift. Did a great job, ladies. And then we have Mario Martinez, a senior. He is a regional champion in the 165-pound division and a state qualifier. And he got 16th in the state and when, when you really think about it, you're the 16th best guy, 16th strongest guy in the entire state of Texas. And that's a big state. So you did awesome. Donnie Bowers, senior, he got third in the super heavyweights. These guys have, have been awesome. Have been doing this for a long time and they've, they've been great in, in a lot of different things also. And then there's two guys that are not here, Luis Morales and John Daniel Lopez. They're also regional qualifiers. And I also have to say thank you very much to Ms. Bowers. She's kind of our, she works for the school district. She's kind of our team mom and there's absolutely no way we could do all the things that have to be done without you. Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you, guys. There's your powerlifting team. Thank you all.
Okay, next up, we've got a, a special group of young ladies who's had a special year. Our women's softball team at Central High School. Coach Pumphrey.
All right, well, first I'll introduce our ladies. We have our senior, Marissa Cruz, another senior, Amy Rodriguez, a sophomore, Kaia Howe, junior, Michaela Jones, junior, Sydney Gilbert, junior, Maddie Stewart, senior, Tori Ontiveros, freshman, Emily Sanchez, and senior, Tania Love, and freshman, Brisa Gonzalez. So this is our 2017 ladies softball team that made history for the first time ever making it to playoffs. It was a great feat. We had a season record of 14 and 16, a district record of 8 and 6. Two of these girls, Tania Love, Marissa Cruz, they both signed to play at the next level for college. We had three girls make honorable mention, Kaia Howe, Tori Ontiveros, and Maddie Stewart. Two of the, or sorry, three girls made second team in our district, Sydney, Amy, and Megan DeSenzo, who's not here today. And we had one girl make our first team and that was Marissa Cruz. And what were most, I mean, we love that they're student athletes and we had over half the girls make the academic all-district team. Michaela Jones, Sydney Gilbert, Marissa Cruz, Megan DeSenzo, Kat Herrera, Tania Love, Haley and Ally, which were both our managers, and also Emily. They all made our academic all-district, which had to be a 90 or above. So, I mean, they're putting work both on the field and in the classroom. And this is your 2017 Central softball.
And our last group tonight will be the baseball team at Central who had another great year and very proud of what they've done. But Coach Penry, come on up.
I can't guarantee you I'll be as fast as Coach Pumphrey, but we, I'll do my best. I had something really nice to say and a great opening, funny, and, and I'm a little nervous because everybody in here that can make turf and lights happen, they're all my bosses. So I'm not going to say that joke and I'm just, got to give a little plug about the turf and lights. The, this year's team was, was unbelievable and I, I haven't told these guys this, but whenever you finish a season like we finished last year and we weren't invited to come here, that was our biggest motivation. Like, hey, you only take playoff teams, so that made us go above and beyond this year. And, and what I told the, I didn't tell the kids this, but I'll tell them now, is we really overachieved. We were, we're a year ahead of schedule and it speaks volumes about their work ethic. And we didn't put any expectations on them other than compete every single day. And they excelled and, and they really overachieved. We have several guys that couldn't make it today. Avery Whitehead was, was one of them and he has a job and he wanted to invite everybody out to see Cece's pizza tonight because it's his first day on the job. So after the board meeting, y'all are more than welcome to be there. So I'll introduce these guys and tell you any awards that they got. First team, all district, Brock Martin is up front. Our pitcher of the year, who was 10-0 on the season, Brandon Finkston, he was pitcher of the year for the district as well. Senior, Kason Hux, he was first team academic all-state. Tommy H, who signed to play football at Angelo State, he came out and, and ran bases for us this year. He was a returning pitcher that had a bum shoulder. Sorry to say it like that, Tommy. Bryce Turner was a senior outfield, first team all-district. Carl Euston, senior pitcher. Jonathan Lamone, go ahead and raise your hand, guys. Golly. Second team, all-district, Spencer Burris, another pitcher for us this year. Blake McKeska, outfielder for us. Trey Nestlidge, pitcher for us. Nixon Brandon, second team, all-district catcher. Dawson Daniel, first base for us. Ranch Roses, all-district, second team, third base. And Hayden Stevens. So these guys, we, we graduated 12 seniors and last year we started six freshmen. So these guys that were all-district, a lot of these guys are going to be back. And like we talked about, the expectations, we're, we're not going to sneak up on anybody this year. We were 24 and 12 with the district championship. So in the first one in 30 years. Mr. Lehman, you may have been on the, the one before these guys. I'm just joking. Sorry to call out any age difference there. But anyway, like I said, I'm extremely proud of these guys. And, and I'll tell you a quick story about what really started these guys on the win streak. We were the hottest team in Texas with a 14-game win streak in 6A this year. And when we were, we started off 3-7. And Coach McCauley always asked us to text them the scores and stuff. So for seven losses in a row, I was kind of dreading like, golly, I'm going to get fired here. Lost another one, coach. And the, the seniors came to me and said, hey, coach, here's the deal. We'll win if you let us keep our cell phones because we always take them up, hey, focus on the game before any bus rides. And I said, well, let me think about it. And I thought about it. Well, we can't get any worse. We're on a seven-game skid. So I let them keep their cell phones and sure enough, they were right and they won 14 in a row. So I'm really thinking about reevaluating the way I coach and just letting them keep their cell phones from now on, if that's the key. So anyway, this is your 2017 Central Bobcat baseball team.
Yeah, thanks, Coach Davis, for being here as well. He's ignoring us, so it's perfect. Okay, I mentioned this much earlier in our meeting, but item 10 is for anyone wishing to make public comments to our board team. Item's not on our agenda. I see only staff people left and administrative team members, mostly. So we'll move on to item 11, which is approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Hernandez and a second for Mr. Parker to approve the April 10th, 2017, the minutes from our April 10th, 2017 financing pre-agenda workshop as well as our April 17th, 2017 regular board meeting. Are there comments and questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Thank you. That'd be a 6-0 vote, Marta. We've lost Gerard. Gerard has left the building. Our next item is reports. We do have our student enrollment report, I think. The 33rd Monday of school indicated that we were, had 40 less students, so we're pretty much right on target. Our fifth, six weeks average daily report was slightly better than our fifth, six weeks average daily attendance report last year. Those are provided in our Friday facts. And I don't think we have anything. Ms. Henson, just thank you for being here. We appreciate your patience and being a part of our board, our board meetings. Our next item is, our consent items, A through H. Do we have a motion to approve? Yes, thank you, Marta. There's a, there's a, Marta left at our stations here, our places, a revised list of our superintendent's recommendations for the school year. Do we have a motion to approve the, the original recommendation as well as the addendum?
Move to approve the superintendent's recommendations for the school year 2017 and 18, including the addendum. All right, we're going to approve all the consent items. I was doing, looking at this.
Thank you.
Should have been quiet.
Motion.
A through H?
A through H.
Plus an addendum of that also?
That's perfect, Max.
Perfect, all right. I move to approve consent items, A through H, and the addendum that goes with that.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Hernandez. Our consent items are item As, donations. We had a number of donations for the deaf Olympics. We appreciate everybody supporting that. And I know Ricky Black, one of our principals at, our principal at Lee, Lee Middle School is very active with that. So we appreciate her work in, for that group. Item Bs, we mentioned our, our superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 2017, 2018. And there's an addendum to that as we mentioned. Item Cs to consider bids for child nutrition department for 2017, 2018 school year. That's for dairy items. Item D is to consider bids for child nutrition department for bakery items. Item E is to consider child nutrition department bids for 2017, 2018 for pizza. Item F is to consider the sale of vehicles. These are vehicles that the districts used in many cases for many years. A number of buses this particular time that we'll be selling to the public. Item G is to consider bid number 17-005 for fire alarm inspection service. And item H is to ratify the administration's action and sell of properties. These are properties that we sell in conjunction with the county or the city in order to collect, to get them back on the tax roll so we can collect taxes on those properties. So that covers items A through H. Any questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of April 2017. We have a motion for Mr. Dindel and a second for Mr. Gallegos to approve our bills, accounts, and financial statements for April of 2017. Do we have any board comment or questions? Any public comment?
Mr. Lehman, sorry about that. In an effort at our financial transparency, all these reports can be found online, saic.org. Click on the tab marked District and you'll see a Financial Transparency tab under District. All these reports can be found online.
Thanks, Mr. Dindel. Any other comments or questions for our board team concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements?
That was a sad moment because I was used to hearing Mr. Archer make jokes.
Yeah, that was. Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider a proposed amendment to the district's official budget to our general fund. We have a motion from Mr. Dindel, a second, multiple seconds. We have a second from Mr. Hernandez. Are there any questions or comments concerning, from our board team concerning our district's official budget? We're moving money around from one fund to the next, but there's no, no change in the overall budget for the district. Any other comments or questions or any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider the district's innovation plan. And Ms. Hollahan's going to help us with this. Shelley?
Thank you, sir. For the past six months, our district has gone through the process to become a district of innovation as defined by the 84th Legislative Session, In-House Bill 1842. The district of innovation plan is effective for school years 2018 through 2022. It is a five-year plan. The local committee considered several exceptions with the following recommendations coming out of committee and were written into a district of innovation plan. The first one is teacher certification. We will continue as a district to seek highly effective certified educators for teaching positions and maintain its expectation for employee certification. The district will make every attempt to hire individuals with appropriate certification for the positions in question. However, where that is not reasonably possible, the district will have the flexibility to hire individuals who are knowledgeable in the area and are fully equipped to effectively perform the duties of the position based on local certification criteria. If a non-certified teacher is assigned to a specific classroom, written notification will be provided of the assignment to the parents or guardians of each student in that classroom according to Board Policy DK. The second one is probationary contract. We are seeking a two-year probationary period for all experienced teachers new to the district that have taught five of the last eight years in order to better evaluate the teacher's effectiveness in the classroom and provide an opportunity for professional growth as needed. The third plan, the third innovation is first day of instruction. And we would allow relief, it would allow relief from the statute to develop a calendar that addresses students' instruction and focused professional development in conjunction with the new instructional minutes required rather than days. It would allow for the first and second semester to be somewhat balanced, which is critical in semester courses. It would align the district calendar with local universities, which would afford students and staff the opportunity to enroll in summer college sessions on time and attend on time. The local starting date for the first semester will not proceed August 15th in any given year. And an annual calendar will be submitted to and approved by the Board of Trustees. And the calendar exempt. And the calendar exemption does not affect the number of contract days for teachers, which is 187 days. Our fourth, our fourth exception is transfer a student. And what we are seeking the exemption for is to require all students to follow district transfer requirements regardless if you are inter-district transfer, intra-district transfer request based on consistent policies for all students. And what that means is students outside of the district would be aligned with the district transfer policies for inside the district. We also are looking at class size and we recognize that smaller classes are beneficial and will continue to, we will continue to use the 22-to-1 student ratio, teacher ratio for kindergarten through fourth grade in projecting the number of staff needed for future school years. If all classes in a particular grade level reach the 22-to-1 ratio, the district will determine if it best suits the district or campus or grade level to enroll the student at another campus, allow the current campus to exceed the 22-to-1 limit, or hire an additional classroom teacher to compensate for additional students. And I, I don't know that you all know this, but every day for the first two weeks of school, the first 10 days of school, we can, we look at class sizes in our K through fours to make sure they're not exceeding and we, we talk about those. It is much harder as the year goes on in the middle of the year, if we have a class that exceeds 22-to-1, to separate kids and put them with a new teacher. But at the beginning of the year, we are diligent in looking at that class size and trying to hold them at 22-to-1. If all particular classes in a grade level reach the 24-to-1 ratio, the enrollment for that grade level on a particular camp, I'm sorry, campus will be closed and students will be enrolled at an alternative campus according to Board Policy FDB Local. The Board of Trustees will be informed at the next convenient meeting when a grade level average exceeds 22-to-1. And also, this is one that was, that was questioned and it was rewritten in the plan and I think you have the highlighted sheet there where it is, is when a K through four grade level average exceeds the 22-to-1 ratio for 30 consecutive days, parents will be notified. And our last one is designation of campus coordinator, campus behavior coordinator. We will maintain all the duties and responsibilities outlined for a campus behavior coordinator and will allow the role to be fulfilled by more than one administrator on the campus. Right now, the guidelines say there's one person designated, but when you have a campus like Central High School or Lakeview or our middle schools, they are, they are too large to only have one person designated as that. So that's why we're requesting that, that exemption be that we have a campus team as a behavior, campus behavior coordinator. I am recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the district of innovation plan.
Thanks, Shelley. Any questions from Gerard?
The teacher certification is just, and I understand why, why we would use that. Mostly during our, our pre-agenda meeting, we're talking about how it's mostly for the K courses where it is hard, difficult to find teachers to come work in, in like welding classes and all that. And, because right now, they do have, they had to be certified in order to teach that class.
They have to have a bachelor's and then they get a, a teaching degree, yes.
Other questions or comments? Thanks Gerard for that comment. We, we have, as I mentioned earlier, discussed all the items on our, on our board agenda this evening at a previous board meeting, so do we have a motion to?
And this is, this is approved, this is every five years, right? It's, it's, this one would last, and then we bring it up to redo it again.
Yes, sir, it is. It is a five-year plan, but there's, but there is nothing in this that we can't revisit on an annual basis if, if we, if the board feels there's a need to.
So, but it is a five-year plan, so if, if we didn't want to do a district innovation at the end of the five years, you know, we wouldn't have to renew it, so just let it go.
Or we can add to or subtract any other aspects that we might discover that we need in order to better prepare our students. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move we approve the local innovation plan for San Angelo ISD as outlined by Ms. Hollan.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion for Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the district's innovation plan, beginning in 2017, 2018 school year. Is there board comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. We have Paze, our announcements, I think are all we have left. We have Paze's graduation, which is tomorrow at Central High School, Sarah Bernhardt. I think I'm accepting that class, Marta, but any board members are certainly welcome to be there. Our Central High School graduation is at ASU Janelle Center at 10:00 a.m. I think transportation here at like 9, 9 o'clock, so any board members, I think it usually works better if we kinda go together, but we don't have to. So that's at 9 o'clock if you want to leave from here, otherwise meet us there. Item C is Lakeview High School's graduation, as far as our announcements, and that's that afternoon at 4 o'clock. I forgot to mention that Art's accepting the graduation class for Central and Mr. Dindel's accepting the graduation class for Lakeview High School, which will be at the Foster Communications Coliseum beginning at 4:00 p.m. Our financing pre-agenda board workshop in June is June 12th and our regular board meeting is June 19th. And I think that covers all of our announcements. Anybody have anything else or any items that they would like to put on our agenda for a subsequent meeting? If not, and here are no objections, we'll stand adjourned.